Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to the South Burlington School Board meeting. And we'll start with comments from the public regarding items not on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move right into amendments. David, anything?
No.
All right. Bridget's challenged me to facilitate this meeting to adjourn promptly, so here we go.
No pressure.
All right, Cole, no pressure announcements.
So, we just had a Tuttle Choral Concert yesterday, which was really awesome because they're all just starting out. And so, we're also having a bunch more concerts. We're gonna have a jazz band concert on the 11th for SBHS, so that's gonna be at 7:00. And then there's going to be the actual band concert, which is at 2:00 on the 8th. And then there's also going to be another band concert for 7th and 8th grade from 7:00 to 8:00 on the 9th.
And to continue on the concerts, the SBHS Chamber Singers will attend the annual magical festival all day. And the performance starts at 7:30, and that will be on December 13th. And on the 15th, the high school chorus concert will be happening at 2:00, I believe. And that is it for concerts. But at the high school, we are doing a school-wide food drive competition. The advisory with the most food wins a prize. And the food will be donated to the new South Burlington food shelf. And that is sponsored by the Coalition for Community Service and the Student Council. Do you want to continue?
Yeah. So, there's going to be a South Burlington Rotary Ugly Sweater Fun Run/Walk. And that's gonna be at, it's gonna be at the middle school, and that's gonna be on Sunday. Registration's at 10:00, and it starts at 11:00. So, there's also going to be cap week starting soon, which is gonna start the 17th on the Tuesday, and it will be a modified schedule, so we'll start at 10:30.
And then at Rick Marcott, Rick Marcott hosted an info session on master planning and visioning last night. And the Rotary Club donated dictionaries to all 3rd graders at Rick Marcott. It's an annual tradition, I still have mine. And then at Orchard, they tallied up what they raised for UNICEF, and they raised $2,275. And then at the district level, there is a TLC day this Friday for the middle and high school, and then a TLC day next Friday for the elementary schools, which is the 13th.
Great. Other announcements?
Yeah, next Monday, the 9th, from 6:30 till 8:00, here at the library, there's going to be a climate solutions community meeting. Hopefully, we'll have students will be in attendance as well. The Climate Caucus of the Legislature is going to be presenting what they're intending to promote in the legislature this year, but it's really to hear from the community other ideas and have questions asked and the like. So, hopefully, we'll have a good turnout for that.
I saw that on my way into the school to grab some stuff, like I saw a poster. It sounded super cool.
Well, hopefully, you'll be here.
Yeah.
And actually, tomorrow, sorry, outstanding teacher day celebration at UVM, so that happens tomorrow afternoon. And Phil Cirks from the high school and Rachel Barone from Orchard are the two teachers that will be celebrated.
Right. And I just wanted to acknowledge Cole's performance in Beauty and the Beast. I had a chance to attend, and you did a fantastic job.
It was a great show.
Very impressive. Any other announcements? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 6, the City-School Collaboration Discussion.
So, our next meeting is on the 20th, Friday, the 20th. Again, this is a meeting with Kevin Dorn, Helen Really, myself, and Elizabeth, scheduled for December 20th.
Okay, and we'll work on that agenda. If there's anything people want to make sure, other board members make sure we get on the agenda, just let me know. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 7, the Superintendent's Report.
So, I have three items identified here. First is the Rick Marcott School, 100 Market Street. And as you heard from last time Elizabeth reported out, we were at the opening of the groundbreaking activity. Certainly been groundbreaking, and so they've been moving forward. I'm gonna ask Gary to give a little bit of an update on where we are with Rick Marcott.
That's an evening. So, the new parking lot, the gravel parking lot, is complete. The new entrance is complete. What will, in the future, become School Street in the same spot. We've tested, we tested the traffic flow for buses on Monday, and we operated that with the new entrance on Tuesday and today, and it seemed to go pretty well.
Can you hear okay?
Definitely needed the extra parking.
Can you hear okay? I just want to check that you're close enough to the mic, Gary. Thanks.
Gary, and the material that's on there now is some sort of a Sure Pack or something, right? Not paid, but...
It's called Stay Mat. For these temperatures, winter temperatures, it's better than the repurposed asphalt that was originally planned. And it, so far, it's really holding up well.
One question that came up last night when we were at the PTO meeting was, there are a decent number of evening things throughout the winter over there, and there's a set of lights that were in the parking lot that are no longer there, sort of on the parent's side. Is there any plan to put in temporary lights or anything during the winter, or are we just sort of without those for those evenings?
So, there is no plan. I mean, there definitely could be a plan. We can definitely work with Engelberth to, if there is a problem. It's the first I had heard that there was...
It was, and it might have only been last night because it was, it was literally the first day of that traffic pattern, and there were a lot of cones, and it was very dark when we were over there trying to park for the PTO meeting and that kind of thing. So, it's one of those things that we might want to just consider just for safety over the next few months before the evening light comes back.
Yep, I will definitely check into it because we did remove several sets of lights for where the new, the new road went right through where they were.
The other thing I noted, which I'm sure most people have noted if they've gone down Dorset Street, is the traffic flow with, I guess it's partly holiday traffic and shopping, but the right lane that people would turn out to get to Williston Road off of Market Street, many people have to merge in order to make the turn to get on 89 North.
Yeah, quickly.
And that, between Market Street and the light on Williston Road, it is unbelievable. And I'm worried about the school traffic coming off of Market, but if you combine that with holiday traffic too, not that my experience is unique, but I think I, between Barnes &amp; Noble and Williston Road, I think I sat through about seven lights a couple of times.
It's been that way all fall. I mean, the holiday will make it worse for sure, but like...
For sure.
There have been a couple of times that I was late picking the kids up just because I didn't anticipate that many cycles of the light. And Market Street was fine, it was empty, but Dorset Street was just so packed that it was hard to turn onto Market Street.
Yeah.
And then trying to get back off of Market Street took a really long time, too.
Well, and I don't know if we're in a position to sort of encourage people to use Market Street now toward Heinsberg Road, but I do have just concerns about the congestion because people are getting stuck in the middle of the light, too. So, it's, it's pretty bad.
That might be something to bring up at City-School Collaboration.
Yeah, I actually had it on my list to bring it up.
That's good. I'm gonna actually let Gary continue. Lead testing results, and I think, again, I'll come back to the Chamberlain School Noise piece in just a second, but since Gary's standing up. As you know, lead testing has, was legislative requirement, and that has been in process. We've had to do the draws, and the results are starting to come back, not just for us, but for all of Vermont. And Gary's, I asked him to just give us a little bit of an update on where we are with kind of our results related to the lead testing.
Yes, so, so we have two schools that came back, Orchard and Tuttle Middle School. Their results are back. The other three schools are not back yet. At Orchard School, first, the, the new legislation lowered the standard from 15 parts per billion to four parts per billion, is our understanding. It's definitely, the new standard is four parts per billion. At Orchard, we had nine taps out of all the, there were 92 taps at Orchard that were, that were tested. Nine of them came back at four parts per billion or higher. The highest reading was 11 parts per billion in a sink. Three fixtures in the kitchen, the steam pot, and two of the, of the three base sinks came back above four parts per billion. The positive in that is that it's mitigatable, one, by, we believe in consultation with, with the experts that just changing those fixtures will take care of that. They were only the first draw readings that were high. The flush draw readings were all less than four parts per billion. And our process for all of our kitchen employees is water that we cook with and wash with is, is always flushed for 30 seconds before it's used. So, that, that's a positive. So, they are mitigatable. And then we had the project room sink and four classroom sinks come back above four parts per billion. We immediately, as soon as we got the results, took all those fixtures out of service, so they weren't being used anymore. We've ordered the replacement parts to change them out. Once that's done, we will, we will, for three weeks, we will flush them twice a day, and then we will re-sample and send them back to the health department. Tuttle Middle School, they had two sinks that were above four parts per billion. We took, took them out of service as well. One is going to be permanently, it will permanently remain out of service because it hasn't been used regularly in years, and the other will replace the fixture and retest. So, that's where we are, that's where we are now.
The other schools, we haven't received anything yet back, but we will. We'll, we receive results on all five schools.
Yep.
So, we haven't, we just haven't received that, and they're...
And I just checked just a couple minutes ago, and there are no, no additional results yet.
Was, can you clarify for me, Gary? Was the legislation to test all schools combined with a reduction in the parts per billion?
I believe that's the case, yes.
And did, did one lead to the other, or was that just sort of a combination?
I, I don't have the results, but in, I think it was 2017, 18, they did a pilot test for, for some schools in Vermont while the legislation was, to inform the legislation...
So, that might have informed a new standard, then?
Yes.
I don't know, are you aware that that informed the new standard?
I don't know.
Okay.
Thank you, Gary.
You're welcome.
Any questions from board on lead testing?
We sent out the letter today, too.
We suspect that, again, part of the mitigation requirement is we have to do something and we have to inform. And so, part of that is we're doing that here, but also parents need to be informed. And I think Carsten has sent out a letter to his parents.
Yeah, we did today.
And Orchard had done also the letter, has gone out, right?
We got one, I mean, letters there, so yeah, a few days ago.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Brian, yeah.
So, we, we didn't, it doesn't sound like this remediation is that significant, but it, is the, is there a plan that schools would tap into the funding that the legislature approve?
Absolutely.
With both the testing and remediation, okay.
Yes, the remediation will be paid for.
Faucets, you know faucet replacements. Some of these believed to be the faucets or the age of the faucet with, you know, lead solder within them as part of the attributed cause. I mean, where that's not, and that may be in some Vermont schools where it's not just the faucet, it's what leads to that, or, you know, the piping. And so, then that becomes a different mechanism to mitigate that. We don't currently have any of those situations, we believe, you know, at the point. I mean, we believe with a, with a replacement, I think, Gary, that that will mitigate and bring it down within the four parts per billion or lower. That's our hope.
Any other questions? All right.
So, the Chamberlain School Noise mitigation, again, we, since the last meeting, we've continued to seek some legal advice, and we have sought out to speak specifically with the Agency of Transportation about the 10% match. And so, we're, we haven't heard back yet, but that's where we are to date. Again, these are kind of some progressive measures that we're using at the present time around that 10% match specific to the grant. I do think it's important to note, and many of you probably know, that the airport's been receiving some additional coverage around grants and dollars associated from the federal government around either expansion, or there's been some talk on the grants specific to the noise mitigation, too. So, I just think that's important to note when we're trying to come up with this 10% piece. So, again, just wanted to make note of that.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 8, the Ends in Action featuring Chamberlain School.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Mike to, you know, to kick this off here in just a second. And our desire here, again, this is again a new, a new thing, a new, new opportunity. We think it connects really appropriately with policy governance. And again, I give credit to Mike around kind of showcasing some ends that are in action so that when it comes time to report out on ends, you'll, you'll have a dipstick of an understanding of some of the things that go into either academic disposition, personal development, or citizenship. And so, to kick this off, I'm gonna let Mike take it, and we're happy to also have Holly in the audience tonight as well to showcase.
Well, thanks, David. So, I don't have much to add to what David just said. He introduced it really well. The idea is to have sort of periodic updates and examples of some of the work that we're doing towards the ends before the more formal monitoring or ends monitoring report to come at the end of the year. So, we continue to work on that calendar to try to, to get the, the reports and presentations to line up with something that, that supports the board's work. And so, this, the idea here is to inform some bright spots, some things that are happening, especially given the fact that a lot of our data typically just looks at academic proficiency. And so, we're proud of the work we've been doing in the area of proficiency and common assessments, and we still have work ahead. But we're gonna try to really show other examples of progress towards the three other ends. So, I think you'll see an example of that tonight. So, with that, I want to introduce Principal Holly Ruhwell.
Great. So, Mike asked me to come tonight and talk about something new that's happening at Chamberlain, and it's called Wolf Pack Time. You do have a copy of the Wolf Pack Time handbook that teachers have access to in front of you. So, Wolf Pack Time is really a developmentally appropriate advisory at Chamberlain School. And Mike made me pick just one of the ends, but I, I do think there's lots of pieces of the ends, and you'll hear that as I talk about Wolf Pack Time. But the biggest one is around personal development, and when you think about ways that we're building supportive relationships and respectfully advocating for self and others. A big component of Wolf Pack Time is that it's done through a restorative circle process. So, a little history about Wolf Pack Time. Last year, you may have heard that the administrative team spent a lot of time learning about MTSS at Williamstown, and they have an advisory time called Blue Devil Time. So, that's really where this idea stemmed from, and it was a time to incorporate social emotional learning. We also had just finished up a year of restorative practice training, so the half-days that we use for our professional learning. We had Lisa Beddinger from the South Burlington Restorative Practice Program come in and do training for all of our staff, support staff and teachers in restorative practices. So, our teachers were all really familiar with restorative circles. They had participated, but they weren't really feeling like they were comfortable with that next step, which is how do I bring restorative circles at a universal level into the classroom for my students? So, I really heard them say, you know, "We want to do it, but we're, you know, really nervous. What's it gonna look like?" And I also know that if you're gonna implement something, it really needs to be done schoolwide, really guided, facilitated work if you want it to be sustainable. We also had just finished up a full year of using a social emotional learning curriculum at Chamberlain School, and we were seeing really positive results around a reduction in some of those big behaviors that I know you had heard about a few years ago. So, our climate and culture was really in a positive place. And as you know, we've been doing, we're a PBIS exemplar school for the second year in a row. And over the summer, a Chamberlain team, which was myself, two, my two behavior coaches, and my PBIS coordinator, which is actually my music teacher, because we all wear multiple hats at Chamberlain. We attended the UVM Best Institute, so we spent a week together learning even more about restorative circles and then having some work time in the afternoon. So, we decided that we were gonna create our own advisory model because we wanted to further grow the direct teaching of social emotional learning skills, but that we wanted to take the lessons similar to Williamstown, and we wanted to turn them into restorative circles. So, that was the big, the big shift in the format. We knew that teachers would not want to take away from kind of their academic learning time to do this, so we built it into an already existing time, which is our assembly time. Once a week, we have a time where we come together as a whole school. So, we decided to start small. We would do Wolf Pack Time once a month, and then it would be multi-age. So, each staff member, because we have support staff and teachers who are Wolf Pack leaders, would have a small group of students. So, at Best, we picked nine lessons that we felt like incorporated the social emotional learning areas that we were working on, and that's Skills for Learning, Empathy, Emotional Management, and Problem Solving. And we created Wolf Pack Time. It really is about the social emotional learning and incorporating those skills for students to be good citizens. So, this is actually out of the handbook that's in front of you. There's about seven to 10 students. It is a mix of grade levels, and they meet for 30 minutes once a month, beginning in October. We rolled this out to staff during in-service so that they had time to get comfortable with the handbook, answer any questions within the, in the handbook. And here's the purpose. We wanted to provide explicit instruction that aligns to the social emotional curriculum and also the SBSD characteristics of learning that are on our report cards. We know that we want to continue fostering the strong school community using restorative practices. And then we also wanted to have some leadership opportunities for our 5th graders. Now, our 5th graders are actually the ones, when it's Wolf Pack Time, they go down and they get the kindergartners, bring them to wherever their location is. And then we also want to grow them into some of the leaders. So, every Wolf Pack Time starts with a mindfulness component, which you can see in the handbook. There's some choices. I actually vetted the handbook through Susie Merrick to make sure that we were in line with the mindfulness practices that we were using here in the district, also with Lisa Beddinger to make sure that I had, I had written it in a circle format over the summer, and I, I'm certainly not an expert in restorative circles, so I wanted her advice. And so, got some feedback from her about making changes to that. And we also want to make sure that our students have strong connections with the adults in the building. So, this gives them another caring, trusted adult that they can go to in the school. Students will stay with their Wolf Pack advisor, so if you're a kindergartner this year, you'll have the same staff member in 1st grade, 2nd grade, 3rd grade, 4th grade, and 5th grade. So, really a way to grow the school community through small group advisory. So, I have some pictures for you. There's Superintendent Young sitting crisscross applesauce. He happened to be there. This was at the beginning. This is Mr. Moline's, our, our school counselor, his group, and he has a student modeling the mindfulness that happens at the very opening of our restorative circles. On the left, that's our reading teacher, Amanda Rickard. It's a very formal process. There is a centerpiece in the middle. There is a talking piece that gets handed. The adults are always at the same level as the children, except for Mr. Moline and the student are modeling the mindfulness part, so that it's a very purposeful way to, to allow students to have equal voice. So, teachers are not necessarily teachers, they're facilitators of the circle. So, these are some slides from the October, our very first one, and some quotes that you can see from both staff and students. On the left, we had to find spaces for all of these Wolf Pack Times as well, so on the right, that's actually my office with a table slid out of the way. They developed their norms or their expectations that they, they have out every Wolf Pack Time. They post the learning intentions that are up. So, you can see, these are quotes from two staff members. This is from a kindergartner who got to go all the way down to 5th grade and be with Nurse Farrell in the 5th grade project room. On the left, you can see, one of the big pieces of restorative circles is that you speak from the heart, you listen from the heart, and you think with your heart. There's a centerpiece there in the middle that happened to be, happens to be Ms. Hall's in kindergarten, and there she is on the right with her Wolf Pack. Mrs. Brown on the right is communicating with a student who uses an iPad to communicate, so she's taking the time to listen to the student who communicates in a different way. On the left, that's an, an older student who's actually writing down what the expectations are that they are brainstorming in the first Wolf Pack Time. Again, the learning intentions are posted. That's Kat Blanchard, who's one of our paraprofessionals. She has a Wolf Pack group. And staff love that it's a multi-age piece. And I just happened to hear a 3rd grader coming down the hallway who's like, "Wow, that made me feel great." Different ways. Mr. Diamond on the right, he has his learning intentions posted electronically. Other teachers use chart paper to, to do it. You know, it was a little weird, those kindergartners really going out of their comfort zone. So, imagine transforming the entire school for 30 minutes and in five minutes getting 250 students to all different areas of the building. So, the, you know, the first one, we all had name tags, and now it's, it was pretty flawless, I think, the day that you were there, David, by the second one. Teachers also have, and support staff have a chance to kind of individualize. They've got 30 minutes. Some of the lessons take less than 30 minutes, so some of them have incorporated their own pieces into their Wolf Pack advisory.
Thanks, Holly. The, I just wanted to add by, to close, that I just wanted to commend Holly on her work. This is incredible. You'll see in the handbook, you can tell from the results here, the incredible, incredible amount of work and collaborative effort went into this. And I'll just say that from my perspective, it's so hard to translate PD into action, the professional development. We invest heavily in professional development, and so it's really exciting when you see, after having invested heavily in a sustained commitment to restorative practice, resiliency, social emotional learning, to see structures being built in a systemic way like this. So, thanks. The other thing, too, I think, sometimes we think social emotional learning, while we can't really measure that, and the structure you can see here is based on rigorous, you know, rigorous approach that's, again, highly structured, highly intentional with the multi-age groupings that will follow all the way through, and work on self-regulation and the personal development at the same time they're working on community. The last thing that I'll say is this idea of the Wolf Pack, the Way of the Wolf, the strength of the wolf is the pack, the strength of the pack is the wolf. That's something that Holly and several of the principals have been talking about as a way to grow our K-12 community, right? We tend to think of community, our school community, our buildings. Through some of the master planning and visioning work, we've been thinking beyond that, and we've been having conversations that, you know, asking elementary parents to think years ahead and to think about what life will be like at the middle school and high school. But this Way of the Wolf branding almost, that emblem has, we hope, a lot of potential to grow a K-12 South Burlington community.
Again, I would, again, again, thanks, Holly, for presenting, but more importantly, I think, you know, what a, I was there, you know, for a short period of time, but what I noticed and what I most enjoyed was the relationship connection to the 5th grader who now knows by name the kindergartner and vice versa. And there's this real sense of growth in personal development when that's happening. And creating a culture of respect and rapport and commonality is really very true. And, you know, I think it always existed, but this is very, very, you know, specific. And I think there's a real sense of, each of their groups have a real sense of pride in, in who they are and... in who they are and who they connect with, and if that can happen, they know it can happen in other places too. So it's really a really positive thing, and hats off to Holly and her staff for making that happen.
Has there ever been anything else done at the elementary school that's been that multi-age component?
We do things like all-school celebrations every now and then, and we have fifth graders who are like reading buddies or bus buddies with the kindergartners, but nothing that is a K-5 mix over time.
That's pretty impressive.
So again, we wanted to be timely in this particular thing, so again, thanks to Mike and Holly. Ends and action, kind of give a little snippet. The plan is to do it kind of once a month, work it into a 10-minute kind of component, and as we go through the year, as Mike said, when we get to kind of our monitoring report, there'll be some grounding. You won't have all of the information, but when you hear, you know, the ends and actions have those connections to some of the monitoring, I think it will be helpful to board members to be able to, you know, understand.
Can I just ask one more question? How are we sharing those learnings with the other elementary schools, and is there a plan for those schools to try something similar? Or how are we sort of sharing all this great learning that's going on district-wide?
So I sure hope so. I think we share a lot of the same values and same priorities. As you know, each elementary school's, you know, got different things going on. But, you know, if we can do this K-12, definitely we can do this K-5, right? So, yeah, I think this year, you know, Holly and her crew have jumped out ahead and are kind of showing the way, and I think we're going to learn from this year, and we don't even have to call it a pilot, but I think definitely the plan is for us to keep talking about this with our other elementary colleagues and see what it could look like at the other schools.
And we also do a lot of sharing at our admin team meetings, so that's how Mike and Carsten all have heard lots about Wolf Pack. They all have the handbook as well. So, and actually, I was fortunate enough to present at the PBIS Leadership Conference in October about student voice, and then also with Laura Lee Keach, our PBIS coordinator. She did a strand. I was part of her strand as well, on the way that South Burlington has really grown their trauma-informed practices in a really concerted effort and used our professional learning time. So I tied this into both student voice and trauma-informed practices at the PBIS Leadership Forum.
Great. Thank you.
And also, the board is in receipt of a letter from Dan French, Secretary of Education. Holly, recognizing you and Chamberlain School is having achieved the Vermont PBIS, the Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports School Status for the 2018-19 school year, so congratulations.
Thank you. It's a team effort. It's not just me. I have a fantastic team. And I will say, I think there's plans, maybe, I'm not sure, is the middle school or the high school going to Best this summer?
The middle school will actually send a group there as well, and so we're going to be researching that. One thing we've also explored is to have a multi-age TA also. That's something we're taking a look at sixth, seventh, and eighth grades, so something to look at for the future as well.
Because of the way that the funds are allocated, it's usually one team that can go to Best a summer, so this happened to be my turn this year, and that's what we chose to work on. So I think there might be more funds that, more than one school is going this year, but I do know the middle school. It's a really nice work time, and you have coaches that you can work with, so it's a fantastic learning opportunity over the summer.
Good. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Holly.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item nine. I guess we might not be done with Mike.
Nope. So Mike, you are on with Smarter Balance.
Do we need to move again?
Yeah, we do need to move. I'm sorry.
Yeah, relocate.
Different version.
Great.
So, David, do you want to just jump in? Okay. Great. So you'll recall, last fall, I shared our results from our Smarter Balance assessment, and with statewide comparisons. And just so you know, that is the piece that slows things down. We, you know, there's some folks do share some information out, some school districts do, in the spring or late spring, but in order to have the Vermont comparison, for them to kind of lock in the census data, we have to wait several months to do that. So anyway, so that explains the spring assessment with the fall report. It's to give the state time to settle those. So if you want, I'll, I can just do the same thing we did last year, which is for me to sort of just walk through. I'll try not to overanalyze or overinfer from the numbers that we see. I'll try to qualify, you know, cohort sizes and cohort effects as we go, and then leave plenty of time for your questions and your own observations. And again, you know, this is one assessment and one year, so we need to keep it in perspective, but it's a useful one, and it's the one that's part of the annual snapshot that the Agency of Education is now doing. It's the one that our, you know, the wider community oftentimes looks at, and so it's a very high-profile one. It's norm reference, standardized, so it's an important one. So with that, I'll just start with this, with our first one. I believe you have a handout to follow along. And what we see here with this, again, South District to State comparison from, again, this is from this last spring's testing. So these are last year's, right, third graders and fourth graders. And so the good news is that we score higher than the state average, oftentimes well above the state average, without exception. So that's the case for math. And then these are the next page, English Language Arts, same thing. And so I do, when I go to regional meetings, my colleagues do tease me a little bit because of our district's high test scores. They say that they're jealous. So this is, these scores are high, and we're known for doing really well on the Smarter Balance assessment and other districts, so it's something we should be proud of. So if we go to the third one, we can see now with our overall student population, the results compared to economically disadvantaged, and the proxy used there is free and reduced lunch eligibility. And...
What's that percentage, again, the percentage of our student body that...
So it varies school to school. It's right around 15% district-wide. So, right, so right when we look at grade three, we see, you know, 39-point difference. And so, and so there, you know, I think this is the part that keeps me up at night. The qualifier I would put on this is that the groups, we're going to see much more variability, volatility, you could even say, in the numbers with the economically disadvantaged, both year to year, and cohort effects when you run those numbers, because they're smaller groups. So with a smaller group of students, you're going to have more volatility. So the one, I guess, bright spot I'd highlight on this slide is that the 50% in grade five who met proficiency in math from our economically disadvantaged students is actually higher than the state average. So that's a bright spot.
State overall average.
Yep, the state overall average. Sorry. Yep.
Do we have statewide figures for economically disadvantaged?
We do.
Because it'd be nice to understand how we compare with that. That's one thing. And the other is, I'm just curious, you know, we're doing well against the statewide average, but what is the statewide average percentage of economically disadvantaged as well? So if we don't have a very economically disadvantaged, if we don't have a big population and 40% is what the standard is throughout the state,
Right.
Our numbers don't look quite as good as they appear initially relative to the state, so.
Right. And thank you. And I'd be glad to, I can get that information, add this to the slide deck, and amend the report. And again, you know, 17%, when we see numbers like that, that's, I think, cause for alarm. You know, there's, you know, there are comparisons, and then there are comparisons, right? So thanks, Martin. On our next slide, yeah, I'm sorry. Sorry to go back to the first one here. Just to be clear, the grade five, 50% economically disadvantaged, that is higher than the overall state average. So, thanks. So here, again, we can see that our, you know, there's been a lot of talk in recent years of the achievement gap, and No Child Left Behind Act really kind of zeroed in on that. And I think it's important for us to not kind of fall prey to a deficiency mentality when we're thinking about students who maybe haven't tested as successfully or shown proficiency here. And when we look at these numbers, it's clear that we still have work to do. So when we're thinking about equity, I know that in my role, I'm thinking probably not incremental change in this area is probably not going to get us where we want to be as a district. So I'm thinking about, yeah, those are the things that I'm thinking about. I think we should be looking at in the years to come. On this slide, the grade five, so good news here, grade five, grade seven, and grade eight, each of those groups are all above the overall state average. So that's a cause for celebration. That's positive. So here, your handout has, I think, the only typo I've been able to find so far. Your handout says four-year comparison, and there are five years presented.
Is this at all like No Child Left Behind where the benchmark goes up every year, and so the number is making it go down?
Thanks. No. So now we're under the Every Student Succeeds Act is the new reauthorization of the SEA, and so most people in the field are very glad that that sort of annual yearly progress is a thing of the past.
Okay, so the benchmark stays year after year?
Yep.
Okay.
And so, but they do, there is like recalibration of the actual assessment, and so you get some movement in some years, especially the first years of the assessment.
Yep.
So, yep, good question.
I know Stuart Weiss had said that there was one year, a pretty major recalibration that made it really difficult to compare those two years. Which year was that?
Yeah, if memory serves, it was the second year, going from the first into the second year.
Okay. Because those numbers do jump a lot into the second year for most of the grades, and I was wondering if that was the year that we were talking about.
Yep, I think that was the single biggest change. So yes, we have a five-year comparison here. I guess just a couple of quick comments. There are more, you know, there's a general downward trend to the state numbers in Smarter Balance results. We're not immune from that. Our own numbers trend gently down or are relatively flat. I think when you look at a longer period of time, it flattens things out too. So some of these, you know, these jumps in scores, which it's really easy to get worried about, are kind of leveled out over time. And when we look at cohort results, you're going to see the same thing. So one thing I would offer is that if you look in 2014-15, kind of look where we started and look where we landed, the, this past spring's numbers don't look that different from the 2014-15 numbers. The ones that went up on this slide, again, just a year to year, grade four and grade nine, right, we see increases, which is sort of the exception to the rule. The most dramatic decreases, right, are grade seven and eight for the year-to-year comparison. And then I would just say that the biggest sort of long-term, if you look at, you know, the five-year, like first and last years here, grade seven, that's a big drop, but if you look across the years, you can see that the scores stay in the 60s. So I guess that's a way of saying that we see, you know, jumps and drops, but when we tend to look at cohorts, or when we tend to look over a five-year period, it looks more stable.
Yeah, I think, again, everybody has figured out that cohort tracking, right? So grade three, grade four, grade five, grade six, grade seven, you know, that is, again, an important attribute that we should be paying attention to, although, you know, there's some things changing there, but that's in part what we, with our data, we want to make sure that, you know, how is, you know, my class, our grade in that school, our whole cohort is a district. How are we doing? How is our instruction, curriculum, you know, PD working to respond to those particular data sets?
Can I ask you another question, Mike?
Sure.
Our sixth grade looks really different than our other years.
Thank you.
And why is that? Are we grouping different learning into different years than other districts, or why is sixth grade so different?
Thank you. So, yeah, that kind of jumps off the page with this slide here. So I had the same sort of observation, and just going back to the curriculum, the scope and sequence, like what's special about sixth grade? And my kind of working hypothesis, and I'll have to dig more into this to find out and to talk to teachers and coaches more, but my working hypothesis is grade six is proportional reasoning. And so I think there's, so you're working with ratios, you're dividing fractions, so there is a jump in, sort of in the math curriculum in grade six. And I also think there is a little bit of comeuppance in grade six, where you're not just, it's not just the elementary to middle school transition. Also, students who still may have gaps in multiplicative reasoning or additive reasoning, those gaps get compounded over time. And so now, moving into proportional reasoning in the math curriculum in grade six, now you really have kind of a compound effect. So that's my best guess at what we see there, and I think that's something I want to work on more with grade six teachers to think about, what could we do about that? And then also to go back into elementary math one more time, too. And there's a lot of work right now in our elementary math around high-leverage concepts and some good collaboration with the All Learners Project. So we're fortunate to have some Vermont Math Institute graduates teaching for us, and we invested heavily in both some specialized literacy and some specialized math PD this year to really try to go after that. Yeah.
I don't want to contradict you, but I think just about exactly one or two years ago, we asked Stuart Weiss the exact same question, why is sixth grade having a hard time? And the results were kind of like this. And I think his response was the transition to sixth grade from the elementary schools was the reason behind that. So
Sure.
It sounds like we're still searching for an answer.
Yeah.
And it sounds like we've got some good theories out there.
Yeah.
I think transitions always, you know, transitions have, you know, definitely an implication, but we're looking at, you know, these are culminating assessments, right, we're looking at. And so it's a little bit of that, I'm sure. Again, I think Mike's point of hypothesizing about it is accurate. We don't really know, and that's part of our work ahead. I mean, I think the other part of this is, you know, test design, right? I don't want to poke at that a lot. I mean, I think they're looking at meeting or exceeding the standard, and what we see is needed for students in this grade to be successful. But, you know, those of you who have had some different assessments done over time, there's one that's definitely a little bit more, you know, has a sense of ease and is easier to follow than the next year. I think that's also, you know, a question needs to be asked around test design, you know, and how that sense is done. But again, we're not trying to, we're not trying to sugarcoat this at all. It is what it is, and it's part of our work.
I have to wonder if at the elementary level, we do, you know, lots of breaks, we've got snacks going, people are in small groups, because really, students... got snacks going, people are in small groups, because really, students don't take in third, fourth, and fifth grade tests this way, they don't have big, long chunks of tests, where I think at the middle and the high school, they're a little more used to that piece. So that I do think there, there are some accommodations built in at the elementary school that probably shift when they get to the middle school and the academics look a little different.
I know Jerry has a question. Hi Jerry.
Is there a conversion for what proficiency is in a marigold score? Is it sixty, seventy percent? Is there some type of conversion factor?
Yeah, it's, it's a little more complicated than that, there's, there are cut scores, these are, like what we're looking at here is not the percent towards, these are the percent of students who have met proficiency.
In definition of proficiency, somebody must set a bar.
Right.
To design what it, I'm just asking if there's a number for that.
Yeah, so that's, that's set by the Smarter Balance Consortium, and if you, I can provide that information to the board, but that goes home in the parent letter with the test board that kind of explains how the raw score gets converted to a determination around the claims.
And are prototype exams available online, so like parents can look at them to see what their children are being tested on?
Yes, so those are available, again, through the Vermont Agency of Education site, sample items, I wouldn't say like a whole.
No, no.
Yeah, but sample items.
You can also go to smarterbalance.org and they have sample items there.
Does the Bridges curriculum go through the middle school years as well, or is that only an elementary school?
You know, really, it's, it's the elementary schools that are really using it the most. And just to come back to this, this hypothesis that I have about misconceptions being compounded over time, which is not something that I came up with, that's something that I'm hearing from math coaches and consultants I've worked with, including John Tapper of the All Learners Project. The idea that, you know, if your, if your additive reasoning is weak, then your multiplicative reasoning is going to suffer, and if your multiplicative reasoning is still not rock solid, then when you get to proportional reasoning, you're really going to start to have a hard time. And something that we're kind of wrestling with, with Bridges right now, is it has a spiraling approach, and so sometime, some teachers are reporting that they're moving on, they're kind of following the program, trying to do that with fidelity, but feeling like it's not really solid, and now we're onto a new math concept. So I think that's, that's part of our work too, is to try to, to, both through math menu and some of like a balanced math block that we're trying to grow at the elementary school, to give teachers the confidence to say, okay, no, we're going to hit pause, we're going to go deeper into this concept until we see that really, you know, the class has this before we move on.
That goes against the Bridges concept a little bit around the spiraling and moving on. Again, that's a concept that they are supportive in, that there's enough, supposedly enough spiraling that happens, that it, that it does allow the students to get it. The worry, of course, is when we see things like this.
We don't.
You know, are they getting that foundational information enough to move on?
So I think our goal for professional learning with math, with elementary teachers, is so that Bridges is working for us instead of the other way around, so that we can use, continue to use Bridges as a resource for teachers to draw on, because it's just, it's hard to come up with, to catalog and have at your fingertips enough resources all the time, in the area of math especially, and that are appropriate to, to the lesson and the learning objectives. But that teachers have the confidence to be able to hit pause on that scope and sequence and, and really work on what the class needs to work on. So, yeah, so that's the, kind of the hard work we're engaging in right now. So, so here, you'll see, you know, not a big surprise, ELA, both Vermont and district, the score sent to be higher. And same thing here. You know, from the year-to-year, we see grade six and grade nine go up a little bit. We see a pretty big drop in grade three from last year to this year, and again, cohort effects, and we have to be careful, and there's a margin of error in there, and, and still, when we see, you know, a ten-point drop or more, we want to be paying attention. So, and grade three, of course, is the grade where we say, we're, we're not learning to read, hopefully, we're reading to learn, right? Where our reading skills are strong enough so that students are using their, their reading skills to really, to access the curriculum. So grade, grade three, from a literacy standpoint, is seen as a pivotal year. So I'll just keep moving through here, we have, we have some cohort comparisons here. And again, like I said, you know, we see changes over time, but overall, if we look at the, you know, different cohorts, we're going to see, you know, some ups and downs, but it looks more stable than year-to-year comparisons a lot of time. You can see us consistently doing better, the, the orange bar right is Vermont, and South Burlington is the blue bar, and you can see that we compare favorably to the Vermont results.
Oh, I guess maybe I skipped a page, or no, I was on the 2025 math, just that trend from eighty-two percent proficient in third grade, and it's a solid downward trend of forty-four percent proficient in grade six. And, and that was, that was just concerning to me and whether we understood what was happening there.
Right, you know.
And it's a downward trend statewide too, which is.
That's true too, yes, that's true too.
Right.
Was there something that was done statewide in terms of math? I know that we sort of all have different curriculum and, and do our own thing, no? So there's not really been discussion at the state level of why that's happening?
No, again, every, each district has kind of its own programs and curriculum. You know, one, one thing that does come up is a lot of teachers, when you're looking at the early years, a lot of people choose the, the career of elementary teacher because they love children, and they love stories and learning to read, and they have this really, really strong literacy background. And it's really hard to have that same deep level of math expertise, I think, for teachers in elementary schools who have to teach all subjects all the time. And so that's, that's a particular challenge, and to have, to ask for, to not just to know your math, but to be able to teach it several different ways when it doesn't work the first time, is, is a high standard, it's a, it's a tough challenge.
I will say it's about when the Common Core came into play, and then everybody changed their math curriculum. So suddenly it was either Bridges or Engage New York, and then all of the teachers had to get used to these new curriculums, and I think there was a shift from teaching students to teaching the curriculum. And now that, that people are, teachers are, are really like know Bridges and know all the pieces and know what works and what doesn't work, they're, you know, I'm hoping that we'll start to see some, some upward, upward trends.
Jerry has a question.
I also think math gets difficult, more difficult over time. I did well in addition and subtraction, when I got to calculus, it was a bit harder. So I think when you see a progression, you're seeing a progression of difficulty.
Right.
And that's to be expected.
Right.
You can contrast that with the ELA, you don't see that progression, I think you're just looking at a tough subject.
Right. So you, again, you have these in your packet, it's tempting to extrapolate too much, but it's, it's good to, to be checking in with our, our results and to be looking out for, for red flags too. So yeah, so that's, brings us to the end of the presentation, so I just wanted to have, leave time for questions.
Yeah, other questions.
How, how do the proficiencies that we see in the Smarter Balance testing relate to the proficiencies for graduation requirements? Or do they?
Yeah, great question. So it's pretty different, you do have four sort of, with Smarter Balance, they talk about bands and, and claims, so you wind up with almost a scale of four type thing. So that's, that's similar, I think that's probably the biggest similarity. The way you get to that determination though is pretty different. When we're talking about proficiency with the proficiency-based graduation requirements and the student learning expectations, now you're talking about a local assessment system. And so, so now you're, you're not talking about like a national norm reference standardized test, you're talking about common assessments, hopefully, definitely common learning objectives that we now have in place and are continuing to refine for sure at the local level. And that may sound like common sense, like hasn't that always been the case? That has not always been the case. So for, kind of, in the wider community right now, there's a little bit of hubbub around proficiency, and to me, it's really hard to argue against clear, shared learning objectives for all students and making those explicit. So I think at the local level, it's more about that, and there's plenty of work ahead with calibration, given the fact it's not like a national norm referenced standardized test. I think one thing though, again, that's in common, is it's more of a criterion-based system. When you're looking at a scale of one hundred, it's more about GPA, right? It's more about like, you've got a ninety-one point two and I've got an eighty-seven point nine, we're trying to make that differentiation that goes, that it's helpful for class rank and that sort of thing. With here, we're really looking at getting everybody up to a certain place so that we send our students out into the world prepared, and.
When you say here, do you mean on this test or what we're actually doing in the buildings with the graduation requirements?
When we say a proficiency-based system, which can mean many things, we're talking about more a criterion-based system instead of like the bell curve.
Right, which is what we're doing here.
Right. And so some of the challenges around the state, as you probably know, Martin, from the legislature, I think there's a round of testimony coming in January. You know, some of the, some of the difficulties have been squaring those two things. We want to hold our students harmless, want to make sure they can get into the college of their choice, so GPA and traditional grades remain important, but it's really hard to translate one, from one to the other, a criterion-based system to a norm reference system.
Right, thanks.
Can we ask a broader question? Just how this set of results informs your work? Like what do you take away from this, and then how does it fit into the overall picture in your role? As you're trying to determine where we need to change curriculum or where we need more professional development or where we need to allocate resources?
Right, so I think I try to, I'm trying to keep it in perspective at the same time that I know that it's important. It's important because it's an outward-facing data point, it's a highly visible one, it's a point of pride in our community as well. And, and so I think the things that I'm looking at most, I'm looking to see, I'm trying to, again, not over-extrapolate, but when we see, you know, sixth grade math, what, what's going on there? And so to me, it's more a starting point than an ending point, like wow, we see, you know, or when we see a cohort effect, or maybe a transition effect from eight to nine. So those are the types, kind of broader trends that I'm always thinking about when I look at this. And in math, always trailing ELA and our socioeconomic differences being expressed in test scores is the thing that keeps me up at night.
I would say, again, part of our work is, you know, around, you know, ongoing and yearly, is being able to use the assessment information, all of our ends kind of monitoring information, and to be able to work collaboratively with the principals, you know, like Holly, that is looking at, just like you heard on social-emotional learning, there were pieces and parts that she put in place, and what are the outcomes? And you heard some things, again, that were recognized through PBIS and social-emotional opportunities, so some of that data, you know, certainly has come front and center. The Smarter Balance assessment walks right back into that and says, what are, what is going on? Is it kind of something that we believe needs to be addressed? Again, looking at other formative assessments that we have for that particular grade, report card assessment, teacher information, we have a need right now, we have a cohort, we have a classroom, what are the things that we need to do to support good instruction and opportunities for kids to be successful? And how does our budget then respond to that? You've heard, you know, math coaches and literacy coaches, again, there's been strong advocacy based on kind of that, that, that need. And again, I think we know we need to be more explicit, what does, what does the data tell us? And again, I think we're getting to a place that's much more informed than we have in the past.
I have to say, I've seen a lot of standardized testing over the years, and I struggle with how to interpret it, I mean, I, you know, we know at a macro level, we do a good job in the district, generally speaking, so that sort of is the umbrella that I look at things, but it is so hard not to look at this and say, you know, I, I, I always appreciate you sort of saying, okay, you, we should feel good about this, because I don't see it a lot of the time.
Right, right.
And I'm looking at like that math trend.
Right.
And the order of magnitude that South Burlington has changed relative to the state is, it is more significant.
Right.
And looking at some of that, I, I think what I struggle with, and, and I have to believe our community will struggle with this as a benchmark, is the, like the identification of the root cause, so, you know, we've heard tonight, like the cohort group or the, the transitions or the economic disadvantage. So, one, how quickly can a root cause be identified? But equally importantly, is there a triage system that goes on within the district with all the resources we have that says, okay, we are able to sort of quickly readjust existing resources to focus on what has been identified as a root cause? And then other areas saying, no, this is going to be a longer-term commitment, this is going to be sort of a three-to-four-year slow renavigation of resources, and, and that's somewhat, that may be somewhat dictated by the risk associated with not fully knowing a root cause of something, or saying, you know, we don't want to overreact in a knee-jerk way to something that the solution may not be adequate. And I don't know if I'm articulating that, but I, I don't, there's, there's an element of I don't get it here. I, I, I struggle with what is the message to the community, and it can always be, we're better than the rest of the state. That, that, you know, we spend a lot as a state on a per pupil basis, and, you know, using the state as the benchmark, I'm not sure is the best barometer for us in this district. So I'm somewhat saying we need help as a board, because part of our job is communicating out to the community what we're delivering. And this, you're right, this has a lot of visibility, so I'll, I'll stop there, it's, it's an open-ended question, I understand, but.
This is only a hope, and hope is not a plan, but if Holly's suggestion is correct, then the, then the adoption of the new curriculum was difficult for teachers, and now that they're getting better and more acquainted with it, you should see a reversal, but that's hope and not a plan, yeah.
I am struggling, I'll just say that the TLC, we, Holly brought that up several times as, as an incredible resource, and this year, you know, when I was talking about the TLC time last spring to this board, you know, having nine two-and-a-half-hour sessions seems like an incredible resource, and I think we, we're really hoping that, I think we're going to come back to the board and, and in the hopes that the board will, will continue those early releases and late starts so that we can keep doing that. But, you know, the, like from a math, like training teachers and deep training in math, you're talking about, you know, like I said last time, less than half a college course, right? And a college, you know, you take a great college course, it makes a difference, but this is less than half of that. So in my role, I really struggle with, you know, feeling like PD is pinpricks sometimes and being able, not being able to go deeper, for example, with math. So that's something, I would just say, you know, I, I agree with the chair's observation that, you know, we shouldn't rest on our laurels, but I, I would say that this community has a lot to be proud of when we look at these results and a lot that we want to keep going, and that we shouldn't stop there. I also think that, you know, as a broad, sort of to step back from this a little bit, you mentioned macro, right, Elizabeth, and I think that's a. And I think that's a good way to, to look at this. This is like, uh, you know, checking the blood pressure is, is the role of this. In our local assessments, in our classroom or grade three Lucy Cockens writing assessments, um, that's more like how are we doing in the trenches? And that's more, um, so this is less of an instructional tool and more a global check. And these, uh, local assessments and hopefully for the proficiency work, we're going to get, continue to get better and better on that.
I think it'd be interesting too to hear from Cole and Delaney about what's, what's your take on S-VACs and, and your experience as students?
I haven't had to take it in many years. So, um, I remember it did feel like a completely different test when I got to the middle school. Like, well, then again, it was also a change because when I was taking it was the kneecaps. But it just felt like it ramped up and it wasn't that we weren't, it just seemed like stuff that we hadn't gotten to yet. And so I feel like it's just kind of how it is because there's a lot more expected of you when you go to that new level and a very short time to teach it in. And so that's how, what my experience was.
Yeah, me, me as well. When I got into ninth grade, the math wasn't like the difficult part. It was more like the English side because we hadn't, at least at my school, we hadn't totally talked a ton about like sentence structure. And that was kind of on the S-VACs, which was kind of alarming. And then also like, again, when I got into like middle school, we didn't have breaks and stuff. So that was kind of like alarming to me that, um, we didn't have breaks. We didn't, it was just totally different atmosphere.
Thank you, Mike.
And so Mike, on a separate note, you gave the board a reading assignment that we haven't heard anything about.
Yeah, we're going to do that actually, perfect segue.
Can you inform us what we are looking at?
Sure, so, uh, one added benefit, I think of all the work that's gone into master planning and visioning, it's just been some great conversations about what do we want, uh, education to look like in the years to come? What, what does a post industrial school look like? Once, you know, we know that the rows of desks with the teachers standing at the front dropping knowledge is not what we want. We want something that's really driven by collaboration, by performance based assessments, by like design processes with flexible learning spaces and breakout spaces. And so it's been, um, it's been great to see a lot of that go into the, the design work that, um, that the board and, uh, and administrators and, and others have, have engaged in. And so these folks, um, the authors of, um, Timeless Learning, uh, again, I didn't, that's not a book I wanted to impose. It's not under my pillow at home. I do a lot of reading. But they, they, there is an opportunity because they're coming to Vermont in January. They're nationally recognized authors. They're based in Virginia, Ira Sokol and Pam Moran. She's a working superintendent. He's more a, a school transformation leader. And, um, and the work that they've been doing is really around, uh, learner engagement through design processes and real life, kind of like, uh, STEAM, STEM design projects. But the cool thing is a lot of times the students have come up with the ideas for the project. So there's a, a student voice, choice, democracy dimension to their work too. So, uh, the big caveat that I throw out is like, I don't see this book as a recipe. I don't see the book necessarily, um, yeah, as having all the answers for us. We'll probably find things in there that we would want to do differently. But, um, there's some nationally recognized folks who are coming to the state. And our local professional development, um, consortium, uh, C-VED has a dine, a dine and discuss segment organized for January 23rd. And so we've got a flyer for that. And then there's also a three-part series. And we're supposed to, participants are supposed to sign up kind of for three, um, day long sessions. One in January, one in, uh, April and one maybe in May, if I remember correctly. It's, oh, sorry, all the way out in September. But if the board, if some board members would like to go, for example, with Patrick and Carsten and, and David perhaps, or maybe some folks from the, the MPV work group to the dine and discuss, I think there's going to be about 70 people there at the Hampton Inn. So a pretty big format, um, but informal at the same time with these, um, kind of school transformation experts. And then the next day is a day long session. So the board could decide to send a few folks with, with, um, either MPV work, working group members or administrators or both to the dinner or to the workday. And I've obtained permission for us to just do the one of three for the series so that we don't have to commit to all three, which is spread out over several months. So that's sort of the, the gist of it and you have the flyers there describing, giving a little more detail. But, um, I think David, we would have to know within the next, by the end of next week probably in order to get spots, sign people up in time.
Again, it's an opportunity, uh, it's not, again, as Mike said, this wasn't something that we, you know, had planned coming. But since it is, that's what's kind of precipitated, you know, the book and also the opportunity to, to attend. Again, we, we're, we're going to cover it ourselves. We think it's a good opportunity for us to, as Mike said, learn more and look at these types of practice as we go forward. But, you know, board members also certainly I think would be, are welcome to, to come along if you wish. So nice opportunity. Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, sure.
Thanks. All right, seems like a good segue into Agenda 10, Master Planning and Visioning update.
So we're going to kind of partner this, although Bridget's got everything so, so down these days because he's been, it's been well rehearsed and, and, um, so we wanted to just give you an update. This is, we're not currently in a place where Doran Whittier can yet provide a lot of, lot of additional information. But we thought we would just kind of go through and give you a little bit of what's been happening and where we are. So.
So we've had now, um, all of our PTO meetings got rescheduled because of weather. So we have been working through, um, the makeup sessions for those. So we had, uh, Orchard the week before Thanksgiving and we had, uh, Rick Markcott last night. And then Chamberlain is scheduled for, uh, Tuesday, uh, the 10th. So next Tuesday, um, we'll do a, a shorter version of the presentation that Doran Whittier have been doing for the board, just to bring folks up to speed, really just trying to make people aware of the project. Because despite all of our ads in the other paper and all of our discussions in these meetings, there are still folks who are kind of unaware of, of where we are in master planning and visioning. So we're out there doing those. We have several meetings scheduled in January and we're basically trying to fill up January with those types of meetings. So we've got a meeting scheduled with the Rotary, we've got one scheduled with, um, the Energy Committee. We've got one scheduled with the South Burlington Business Association. We're working to schedule ones, um, at different, um, assisted living facilities and different other places, just any place that we can think of that people will gather, um, to answer questions and get information out. In the meantime, we are continuing to have working group meetings. And there's a little subcommittee, um, communications group, uh, that is working on a simplified website that makes it easier for people to find the information they're looking for. Corey's done a great job of organizing just a vast amount of information on the, the master planning and visioning tab on our current website. But it, uh, the feedback we've had is it's a little dense and a little hard to understand where to start and how to really approach it if you haven't been involved in the process yet. So, um, so Juniper Communications is working with Corey and David to sort of simplify and have a project website. And then they're working on, um, other resources for us in terms of explaining different aspects of the project. Just sort of shorter, um, sheets that can be handed to people to explain some of the, the high points of the process and what the vote will look like. The, uh, as I said in my presentation last time around on the 22nd, schematic drawings went to both the construction company and to the third party cost estimator to do separate cost estimates. We're expecting both of those back the week of December 16th. And then there will be some discussion about those to try to understand if they're far apart, why they're far apart. And, you know, sort of to try to reconcile and understand where those two things are coming from. And then just after we're all back from the holidays, there would be a rollout of communication about the project as a whole, including, um, the expected cost and the taxpayer impact and what it would mean for different types of taxpayers. Homestead tax rate versus, um, business, businesses and non homestead tax rate and, and comm sensitized tax rate and those kinds of things. So there's a lot of work going on in the background to kind of prepare for that once we have those numbers. So, um, that's kind of where we are. We might, I forgot to say, we might have fee adjacent property owners, well, two of them anyway. We had put out specific notes to, to 18 or so adjacent property owners to ask them to come in if they had questions about the project. And we had two of them in on Monday night and gave a little presentation. So we're thinking we're going to need to follow up again. Hopefully they'll talk to a few neighbors and, and maybe get them aware of what's going on. And we'll do another, uh, another push probably in January.
We were made aware that they had talked amongst some of their neighbors and anticipated that there would be others to come too. But so they were a little bit surprised, but again, nonetheless, it was, we're going to have to circle back and see if there's other opportunities.
Oh, and I should say, RTN is finalizing, um, the video of existing conditions. So the interviews that were done with Elizabeth and Pat Burke and a student and, you know, yeah, a student. Thank you, Cole. And so that video, um, should be coming out pretty soon. They're working on editing that and, and putting that all together. So am I leaving anything out, anything major?
So the, I know we had a request, um, we've got the meeting with the SBBA and there was a request made by email on the tax impact. So what's the date for that? You said right after the holidays?
Yeah, so.
The tax impact will be after the holidays because we need to, basically, all that reconciliation work will take a few business days. The problem is we're running up against the holidays. So we're not sure where in that week of the 16th, we're going to get those numbers back. And, you know, hopefully we'll have a meeting as a working group to understand those numbers before we all leave for the holidays. Those are the estimates. And, um, the financial advisors are lined up, and we talked to them the last time they were here. They're lined up over the holidays to really sort of take those numbers and, and reflect those in updating the financial model. They've built sort of a rough financial model and they're sort of waiting to plug in numbers. And then they've, I don't know if they've worked with you more, Gary, on sort of translating what that debt service would look like in terms of tax impact. But they're sort of trying to set everything up so the assumptions can be put in once we know the actual cost numbers or cost estimates in December so that when we first get back after New Year's, um, we can, we're, we're looking to find a good date to have a big community meeting where we sort of roll out all of this information for anybody who's like not been aware of the process all the way up through people who are just looking for tax impact, that we can kind of, um, have that meeting and, and talk through it with the community.
Will we have that date scheduled before the holidays?
We're working on it.
We're working on it.
We have a working meeting next Wednesday, working, uh, group meeting next Wednesday. And that's one of the things, again, this is actually a shared Google Doc where we're populating a lot of the dates and who's, who's going. So we're really trying to keep track of that. Uh, one thing I would add is that we're going to get the cost estimate back. The working group is going to work to, as Bridget said, understand it. But you also have an, you know, we have to make sure that the whole board has an opportunity to first understand it and be comfortable with it before we take that next step too, you know? So there's going to be some critical timing here. And obviously if there's some concerns around that number, you know, then, you know, I think there's going to need to be some deliberate conversations with, with Doran Whittier on, on where we go, right? Or, or what we do next.
Yeah, and I mean, our first bill opportunity to talk to all of you about it in a, you know, public board meeting is January 8th because the first falls on a Wednesday. So, so our first board meeting as a group is.
What's the first one after, I know you, you're trying to reconcile the cost estimates, but we meet on the 19th?
We meet on the 18th.
18th.
And we won't have those, we won't have that information.
I wonder, I mean, I wonder if we shouldn't be thinking about an earlier meeting dedicated to that in January.
It won't work for me. I won't be here. And I, I mean, perhaps the people could do it without me, but I think that's, I just don't think people are going to be prepared. And I'm worried that the community won't be back either, you know, in terms of having a public meeting because it takes a while for people to be back.
I think, you know, we're going to need to be really mindful and timely around the, the, the meeting, how the information gets out. We're going to have to come up with a plan that allows several iterations of opportunity to share.
Yeah, I, I have to say, I'm just, I was a little bit surprised that'll, that, that it goes that far into January. But I understand now from what you're saying. I thought we might, well, it, it's irrelevant. I'm just, I'm thinking the same way you are, David, that, um, use, you know, scheduling January is becoming more critical.
You know, that, the SBBA meeting that we have currently scheduled, um, for the 14th, you know, that's probably about, we're going to be pushing, I mean, we'll be ready, I hope, but we're, we're going to be pushing it to be able to provide them with kind of what, what, what the request was, you know, today, you know? So again.
Any other board questions? Questions for the public? Okay, thanks Bridget, thanks David. The next agenda item is negotiations update and I can, um, update that. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed a really big one. That's a really big one. Agenda 11, yes, we are in receipt of the tax commissioner's letters.
So I, again, thanks to Amity and Gary for being here. We did receive this actually yesterday. I think it's, it's got a date on it of December 2nd. It actually came in, I think actually early this morning. And so, um, here to just speak a little bit about it is actually Amity to give a little bit of update for you. Again, we have a whole lot of work to do, um, you know, on, on our budget development. But again, Amity, again, thanks for being here and just maybe give them a little bit of an update on, on what this means.
So the tax commissioner has a tentative recommendation of the, um, yield for property tax to be $10,883, which is an increase over 2020's of $235. When it is higher yield, it is a bit of a favorable ta, you know, it has a favorable effect on our tax rate. However, right now, we know that it's only tentative and we also are missing two other very key components to being able to come, you know, to come up with our final tax rate. And that is our CLA, which is due to us December 15th, Common Level of Appraisal, which we hope will stay somewhat steady, but we have a feeling it may also drop. And with that drop, that does have an ill effect on our tax rate. And then our equalized pupil numbers are due to us on December 15th. I've already heard that that won't happen as timely as it should, um, from the Agency of Education because of the way they collect the data. It draws it out a lot longer than in years past. But we're going to hope that that may come around much sooner than it did last year. Last year, our final numbers were not even really released until February. So, um, we know that our enrollment is increasing here in South Burlington. Our projected enrollment should be increasing. So we're hopeful that our equalized pupil numbers will be higher slightly than they are currently. So that's favorable for us. So unfortunately, we are still missing two very key components to our numbers for our tax rate. And then of course, we don't have a final budget number yet either, but, um, we're getting there. The state does anticipate just from preliminary numbers and, um, I think they, the Agency of Education reached out to some of us big districts about what we anticipated for, uh, ed spending increases for our coming 21 budget. We hadn't even started the process when they asked the question, so we kind of gave them a number. But, um, according to what they've collected from, it looks like a 6% overall statewide, uh, property tax, education property tax increases, you know, in, in the works. But again, it's so preliminary, it's probably hard for them to really give a good number.
The VT Digger article corrected that to 5%, um, so.
Oh, okay, well, I'm just reading right off of the letter from the state.
No, I know. They did make a correction, I presume the correction came from the Department of Education.
I would hope, yes.
I think the letter, the correspondence that's in here is, you know, I think informative, you know, a, a little bit about the assumptions that are made. Some of the variables that are hap-
are happening, you know, concerns around, you know, overall statewide declining enrollment, yet seeing increases. And, you know, we've had some conversation, you know, amongst ourselves around, you know, what are some of those drivers? And again, I think there's, you know, again, some general ideas around, you know, we've, they've been working hard, we've been working hard on Act forty-six. When I say "we," the state has been working hard on Act forty-six with small school mergers, and where mergers happen, there's also incentives that come along with it. And I'm curious to know how those are, number one, working, and again, they've either been at eight percent, six, no.
Cents.
Six?
It's cents, not percent.
Oh, yeah, eight cents, six cents, four and two, right, on over a four-year period. So, you know, what kind of effect has that had on, you know, the overall system draw, you know? I don't know if you have any particular questions, we're pretty early, this is actually, you know, this is helpful to get this now. We typically have not gotten this necessarily on time either, but helpful for us as we build the budget.
The other variable, the pupil count, you have the equalized pupils, isn't that a requirement by law?
Yes, it is.
So, I mean, this has happened year after year. At what point is there some accountability with the AOE around getting accurate information out?
Yeah, we, again, good question.
Yeah, Martin, how about you weigh in on that one?
So, this is probably not the only place where they're not quite in line with legislative, with legislative deadlines.
Mm-hmm.
It's, yeah, I mean, it's only so much one can do. It's between the executive branch and the legislative branch. We tell them to do something, and sometimes it doesn't get done, but you can't really hold them in contempt or arrest anybody for this.
It's like, is citizens' arrest? Can we?
I think that's a true thing.
I mean, you think, there's a general cause here around just the collection of the information, right? And we work hard to get our data together and in on time, but it's not an easy process to certify your data, to certify your information, and we've had some changes in that area. And you can submit your data, but it has errors in it, and the way the errors are indicated is complicated. It's almost like, there's an error somewhere in your email, you've gotta go hunt and find it. It doesn't pop out to say where your error is in trying to make it certified, so there's a.
But the bottom line for that is that they don't have the resources to be doing that. And the legislature, not to, you know, complain about the executive branch versus the legislature, but I will, the legislature has been pushing or asking about more resources for Agency of Education for as long as I've been there, but it seldom will tell the executive branch that, when they come and they say, "We need this number of FTEs," we say, "No, you're gonna take ten more." You know, we think that this is understaffed in the Agency of Education. That message is sent to them, and in fact, we did, I believe with the Act one seventy-three, we did in fact put in additional FTEs for the Agency of Education for this one particular area, but that doesn't happen that often, and maybe that should, maybe, but it's kind of tough to tell the agency that you have to have twenty more people because you're understaffed. We do tell them that, it's hard to legislate that.
Yeah, I think the change, there's, I think, many factors, again, I'm, we're not representing AOE, we have to work with them, they're integral and important to us. Definitely, we've seen major staff turnover there, where, you know, somebody's there for a bit and then gone, so that's obviously related to pay structures, I'm assuming, or working conditions, who knows? But that's a really, really hard part, and then, we have to figure out, you know, there could be three or four of us trying to figure out how we're gonna get what we need from the agency to do, and almost trying to do some of their work. So, there is a lot of conversation around how to help, you know, right-size and support AOE in many different facets of the work that we do. This happens to be really one really important one. At the same time, there's data systems that are trying to come into play, and you've heard us talk about e-finance, right? They were trying to integrate us at a time when it didn't really make sense to do so. So, we've advocated, you know, for timely implementation, and, you know, we had to work hard at getting that. We generally believed that there was a need to do a delay in the state, we advocated for that, too, but in the end, we, you know, had to advocate for ourselves. So, there's multiple layers of concern, and.
Is there any productive remedy from a board standpoint?
Well, I know, just, I mean, the Vermont School Board Association has also been pressing to have this addressed, and we also made clear, I mean, the people who are there are very good people, they just don't have nearly enough, but yes, the VSBA has been advocating at the agency, at the governor's office, in the legislature, to try to get the appropriate staffing, which, I mean, that's probably not the only thing, but it's a big component of the problem with.
I think advocating, you know, having boards advocate and communicate through VSBA is a really important one. I mean, you know, VASBO, the Superintendent's Association have all, you know, I think stepped up to try to say, "How can we make this better? How can we improve?"
Well, I mean, by way of example, I didn't see any resolutions at the VSBA's annual meeting in regard to this type of issue, so I'm kind of wondering, should we?
I think there has been a resolution with the VSBA for a while.
Oh, okay.
And I know that they have been advocating for appropriate resourcing.
I hate to say, it's also a problem with all the school districts getting their information to the Agency of Education, and business offices can have staffing problems as well, statewide.
Yeah, I think we're doing pretty well in South Burlington, thank you both, but there are other districts that have a different business manager every two or three years, and they're running on a skeleton crew, and they're the ones that get the average daily membership and send that to the education, Agency of Education. And if one district in the state has it all wrong, then the equalized pupils can't be calculated, because it depends on the total statewide ADM, and if one district is wrong or they lose somebody and can't get it in on time, then nobody gets it. So, it's more of a, it's a lot of factors in there, and it's.
We've personally been frustrated with trying to get certified data in. We've done much better, again, we've had some staff that have been working, you know, really, really hard at it, but it's really, really difficult when you think you're all set, and you put it in, and it will come back, it's not eligible to be certified. So, there's something in that program, and it doesn't particularly tell you where the problem is. And so, you know, Alex is right, for some of the smaller schools or don't have those resources the same, it can be very, very frustrating on, we've got, you know, fifteen errors, we think we fixed them, and then we got twenty-five errors, right? And then, we, you know, so it's kind of, it's a programmatic issue, which, and from my perspective, there's gotta be a better way to have some programming done that can make that more efficient. But again, that's a piece of kind of the complications related to, again, right now, just, you know, equalized pupil, and there's a whole series of things. Brad James, been there a long, long time, very, very competent individual, but, you know, his email was, you know, "This is our best guess right now, and hopefully, it will become more favorable, you know, as time goes on, but you can at least begin to start." This is, again, big, big changes I think are needed on how we budget, you know? So many of our factors don't come known until the very end, it puts us in the difficult place with our community around trust building, you know? Like, why is my tax rate different than what you said it was gonna be? You know, and you've heard me talk about that before.
And of course, we're gonna get a report as far as changing the whole weighting system for equalized pupils, too, which.
The weighting study.
Just to.
Study committee being.
Add fuel.
So, I have a question, which I've asked to the Agency of Education three times now. Does anybody know how the tax rate is actually calculated? So, in South Burlington, it's one point six oh three. Does anybody know how that's arrived at?
Yes.
You do?
Yeah.
Would you let me know?
Sure.
Great.
So, you start with your gross.
Oh, no, you can send in an email. That's all right.
There's a whole presentation in the budget book about.
Yes, and we had it in much clearer words last year's budget book, too, so.
Get that information, so if you have it, and you can send me an email with a link, that'd be great.
You bet.
All right, anything else?
Thank you.
Oh, there's, this is warned for action.
We don't, we don't, we don't need, we don't need any action.
That's good.
Mm-hmm.
All right, agenda item twelve, negotiations update. Bridgette and I are meeting informally with good timing Kathy Murphy and Noah Everett, the co-presidents of the SBA tomorrow, and we're looking to set up a negotiations calendar in the very near future. Anything else on, I think that's it. All right, other paper articles. Cole, we need to approach you on perhaps accelerating your article.
This unfortunate timing given half week.
So, I think I'm describing the issue. Our challenge is we will not have a finalized budget to be able to write an article for submission twelve seventeen in the one, in the January second issue, so we're wondering if it's possible to move up the getting out the vote article, which would precede the actual budget.
I'm still working with the administration on making the event happen.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if they will have enough time to approve the event, and I wouldn't feel good to be writing an article about something that may or may not happen.
Okay.
I have talked with Ms. McDonald about it, and with the Executive Student Council about it, so it is in the works, but I was hoping on using this month as making it finalized.
A couple of years ago, I wrote a budget article, and I think it ran in either November or even October, so if need be, perhaps I could put something together that didn't have any concrete numbers, but rather took a look at the process from a, I guess you could say, more distant view, without actually seeing what the estimated tax rate is gonna be, or what the actual budget is, that's gonna be voted on.
Well, just thinking out loud, and just weigh in any other board member, I'm wondering, Cole, if you can see if that approval might be accelerated? So, that could happen, and if not, we can, we can talk about a backup plan, but I'm wondering if.
I'm happy to help with, you know, with Mr. Burke, maybe, you know, can we assist, you know, again, if it's just not gonna be possible, and I recognize that, you know, we're in December here, but if there are things that are easy and he can help move that through, I did get some correspondence from him yesterday, the day before, he'd done quite a bit of work on the voting piece, and so, I think he's probably more ready than you might have thought.
Okay, I can.
So, why don't I do this, Cole? I'll reach out to him and then, and let you know that I have, and hopefully, he'll connect back with you about helping out to get that article done, and if it's like not possible, he'll, you know.
Yeah, what, if you could just let Mr. Young and I know.
I'll try and get that, I'll try and meet with him by the end of this week and see what's available.
Yeah, and just maybe give us a yea or nay, whether, and I don't want you to compromise the integrity of the article, but it would make more sense to do that first. So, then, my question to the rest of the board would be, if Cole can do it, we'll move the budget to the next one, we'll just reverse those. If not, what do we want to put in place? And we've got one suggestion from Alex, which is more of a process-type article.
Mm-hmm. Would it be like a woo-hoo, Market Street is open type thing? Or is that more of a city type thing? I'm sorry, I'm thinking out loud.
No, that's, it's not bad, it's a good idea.
Spitballing, we're spitballing.
Yeah.
I think we can do it, David.
Board process, you know, board.
Like responsibilities of the board member, and what the process is for running if people wanna run, and all of that.
That's one we, yeah, that's one we've talked about, so, yeah.
We could just swap that in if it does work.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Because that would be timely as well, and we actually have something to fall back on, and we might avoid having to buy an ad then.
So, is that being assigned to me or someone else?
We're not sure it's happening. We're waiting to see.
Let's hold, let's hold off if you're volunteering, and we'll do that, and otherwise, I think we're.
If he's running, I'm not sure he can, Elizabeth.
I'm sorry?
If he's running, I'm not sure he can.
I think that's right.
Okay, well, I would be comfortable authoring that, because I think I helped on the last version of it.
Okay.
Good point.
Yep.
I'll volunteer for that one, because then I can just take Steve's from last year and just use that. It will be an easy one, so.
[laughing].
Terrible student.
Okay.
Plagiarist.
Or awesome student.
Cole, let us know, and hopefully, that can work out. We kind of got, you know, not excited about, but that would give a lot of lead time in terms of getting out the vote, but I know you're linking it to an event, so we got a backup plan.
Okay.
All right, and we've got, so we'll put budget in there, and then, we've got S-BAC results next. Do we wanna add anything for something that would be suspended late March and running in the?
I think that one would be another update on master planning and visioning, and what happened with the vote, and either way, like, what happens next, and, yeah.
Okay, all right. We're probably good with that, then?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Okay, setting the agenda, oh, one quick comment on, oh, I should've, I should've brought it up in the other, in item twelve. I, David needs to know about warning at the, a Monday morning meeting, I'm not around next week, so would the working group like to hold off on scheduling that, or go ahead and have?
I think we should pull.
Hold off, because I think we are waiting for, yeah, RFP responses and whatnot, so, yeah.
All right, we'll hold off on that.
Well, let me say, unless.
Did you already post that? No. The line is so efficient and everything.
Yeah, we, yeah, we'll probably hold off.
Okay, why don't we hold off, and we'll do it the following Monday?
Okay.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
All right, setting the agenda for December eighteenth.
We got a big hour in there for budget stuff. Again, hoping that a lot of the information that we heard from Amity and Gary comes in, wherever we are, we need to give you some updates on budget. That's the big, that's the big ask there.
Yeah, I know this is a little bit premature, but I know you've looked for a little bit of litmus tests in the past, but I know Mike brought up the area of professional development, and I'll speak individually at this point, but I'm, would ask my colleagues to think about it. I think that is going to be a challenge going forward with that same level, in part because of feedback from parents, in part because of maybe reevaluating the instructional time our students are getting, and I know I have a concern about continuing the level that we've committed to.
Mm-hmm.
At least from my experience as a parent, having a middle school kid go in late has been okay, but yeah, having an elementary school kid come home early has been a bit challenging, as you say. Can you fit two half-days into one day and thereby decrease the number of days that parents are hit? Is that still as effective, or do you need them staggered, kind of, you know?
Yeah, typically, it's staggered, it becomes such a disruption, you know, for the transportation piece, you know?
Yeah.
But again, I think, good to hear the feedback, we, what the administrators know is that we, I owe you, you know, kind of what were the days, what have been the outcomes of the days.
Yeah, it would be really.
And the learning.
It would be really helpful, because I struggle, because I, I've been very vocal about the frustrations with so many early release days and late start days. On the other hand, having just gone through parent-teacher conferences, and like, this whole question about curriculum and bridges, and whether it's the right thing for math, a lot of PD work has gone on, as Mike indicated, about supplementing that, and sort of taking the good pieces out of that, and then doing other things, and really disseminating learnings from, we have a few different teachers at the fourth and fifth grade level who have master's degrees now in teaching math, and are disseminating that learning through that PD time, so it's a struggle to decide, like, it would be really helpful to understand how much has been accomplished, or what the outcomes of it have been, so that we can make a decision, because it's really tricky, I'm ambivalent about that, because it has been a big frustration for a lot of parents to have so much time off, and I do worry that, you know, we count those days, that we have early releases as full school days, and they're not, and they, and it's disruptive for the, especially, I think, for the younger kids to really get focused and know that it's a half-day, and, you know, it's, they lose a lot of instructional time on those days, not just the couple of hours at the end of the day, so, yeah, it's a lot to weigh.
Why don't we add, I have a CVSA meeting, that's the Champlain Valley. Why don't we add, I have a CVSA meeting, that's the Champlain Valley Superintendent's, and we have an obligation to adopt a common calendar. I don't think it will be done by the eighteenth, but we're going to have a meeting prior to that that will be looking at the Common one seventy-five. I think it would be good maybe to bring that, we'll just have the calendar on there and let's see, at least, let's, again, let me find out availability of Mike too, Mike, and we need to pull some, I think we have a lot of the data. If we can pull that together, then I'll put it on the eighteenth, if not, we have to approve the calendar anyway, the superintendents in Champlain, Champlain Valley have to do that and then, you know, very soon thereafter, we try to get it done for our district. So, tentatively, put it on, well, I'll put it on here for the eighteenth contingent upon availability of the data and Mike. And that would be calendar and kind of sub-bullet, PD, PD days and outcomes, something like that.
Yeah, and we've had a brief conversation and I don't know if this is feasible at this stage, but it's a question I've asked before, which is really to document compliance with the student days.
As long as you're doing sort of general agenda stuff, you're probably going to want to put the lead back in under your report, right?
Yeah. We have to probably be clear, it's lead testing of drinking water.
We're pushing that in all the schools, right?
Yeah, right, lead testing, you know, we're testing-
Another question I have is, and this sort of relates to budget, it came up at the PTO meeting last night when we were there, because we sat in for the whole PTO meeting that was enrollment and changes in enrollment and is that going to be on the schedule at some point as part of the budgeting process, what projections are for next year and, you know, we heard loud and clear that, you know, for example, the third grade at Rick Marcott is just one example of where they're feeling pressure in terms of class sizes and all of that and we also heard that we've got a decent number of students coming from that very first apartment building, affordable housing that's on Market Street and more of that will probably be coming, so it was, that was just a question I had.
Why don't we add that, I think, again, I'm thinking that we're not going to be as far as we would like to be on budget, so that hour, why don't we put, we'll put another, giving an update on enrollment, which is what I'm doing currently with the administrators, I've been updating them based on our current and then projected based on McGibbons work. And so, we've been working on that these past couple of weeks, so I'll give you an update on enrollment and then where we are with budget, so we'll add that in, it's good. Again, usually, just to be clear, when we do budget, one big component is enrollment.
Right.
So, I mean, that, you'll hear it kind of both ways there, but it's fine, we'll isolate it that.
All right, moving on to agenda item fifteen, future agenda items, our list grows.
I have one to add, too.
Great.
Yeah.
This is one tied for June or July, but I would like a report on how our first class to graduate on proficiency-based graduation requirements, how many kids we are holding over for additional years to make them proficient, or it could be much more positive than that. I've been asked, since we've been doing the proficiency-based graduation, my question's always been, you know, what happens with those who are not deemed proficient?
Maybe just a review of PBGR or assessment.
Right, yeah, and I'd like to understand because by then, we'll now actually know what's happening. I expect that every single student coming out of here will, of course, be proficient.
And I think on, I know, David, you were going to look at sort of where some of this that doesn't have dates or policies on it could be incorporated. Any other additions or anything someone feels we can take off this list? Okay, we'll keep it for now. Agenda item sixteen, any changes to the minutes of the November twentieth meeting? Seeing none, those are approved. Any questions on agenda item seventeen, AP order twenty-one? And very briefly, before I take a motion to adjourn, I have committed to all but one of the Student Justice Union meetings in preparation for Black History Lives Month in February and Alex, you were going to check your schedule?
Yes, I was and I believe I can make, I think I can make every single one of them. I like these seven-thirty mornings.
I'll communicate that to Deidre Donovan as well.
Okay, thank you.
So there'll be one or the other, or sometimes both, but not a meeting that would require a warning then.
Great.
All right, and I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.